Camera off until your item is called, which should be, that goes to Christian Oaks as well. And turn off your camera. While your item is up. Welcome, Christian.
Okay. That's fine.
You mute and turn off the speaker?
Then I can't hear them.
I'll turn on this speaker here.
And we'll just follow us out.
Yeah. Leslie, can you run a quick audio check? Please?
Yes. You could say hello.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
We can more official.
Yeah. Thank you, Leslie.
Boring me that none of the. Commissioners are here. I'm gonna check my. Hey, Privat Tally. Vice Chair Saudi, hi. Thank you.
Leslie.
Hi.
Can you hear me okay?
Perfect.
Okay, great.
Commissioner Haiden. And Christian, if I can ask you to turn off your video?
Turn it off. Can you, can you correct my name? It's misspelled.
Oh, I think you should be able to, but. Yeah. What was your name? How do you spell it?
There's an E between K and S. I'm not sure I can turn it. Oh, I can turn it off.
Second?
Like that, okay. Thank you.
Yep. Evening, Commissioner Harris.
Hello, hello.
And I had last minute announcement that Commissioner Smoothie will be absent tonight. We are just. I think Commissioner. Mercado. Chair Privat Tally, it is seven, so I'll let you decide if you want the countdown or if you want to wait a minute for Commissioner Mercado shows up.
Um. I think the agenda is pretty light, so I would say just go ahead.
Okay. New and. Before we get the countdown, I just want to introduce Danielle Jones will be our new counter inner and timer keeper, so. Yay, Danielle. She's having echoey problems. All right.
All right, everyone, we will start in three, two, and one.
Welcome to the regular meeting of the Planning Commission on Tuesday, March twenty ninth, twenty twenty-two. This meeting is called to order. I'll request staff to call the role for commissioners who are present and not. Leslie.
Yes. Commissioner, excuse me, Commissioner Harris.
Here.
Commissioner Haiden.
Here.
Commissioner Mercado.
Present.
Commissioner Smoothie is absent tonight. Vice Chair Saudi.
Here.
And Chair Privat Tally.
Here. Thank you. We'll now move on the order of the agenda. Are there any changes to the order of the agenda? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on. Next, we'll move on to the meeting procedures. Due to COVID nineteen shelter in place order, we have had to establish new ways of conducting our public meeting. I'd like to ask staff to address how public comment will work this evening.
Yes. Thank you, Chair Privat Tally. At this time, I'd like to ask everyone other than the commissioners to turn off their cameras. I think you've done that. The meeting is being recorded and streamed live to YouTube viewers. YouTube viewers are welcome to attend by telephone by calling six six nine nine hundred nine one two eight and entering the meeting ID, which is eight seven two zero six four five four four three five, and then pressing pound. Or watch directly through Zoom using the link on the agenda. If you are participating by telephone tonight and wish to provide comments when it is your time to do so, please press star nine to raise your hand. Once you hear a notification that the host is inviting you to speak, please press star six to unmute yourself. And I'll repeat those instructions at the opening of each public hearing. At the chair's discretion, you will have up to three minutes to speak. These minute comments prior to the meeting by email or letter have been forwarded to the Planning Commission. Those captioning is available for this meeting and the link is on YouTube.
Thanks, Leslie. Let me now describe meeting procedures. We will begin with a staff report, and then we will hear from the applicant. Please try to keep your presentation to no more, no more than ten minutes. Members of the public will be, will then be invited to speak. People on the conference call can speak when they receive the notification they have been asked to unmute themselves. Please keep comments to three minutes. Commission will have opportunity to ask questions of staff, applicant, or public after each segment. We will close the public hearing and bring the matter back to the commission for discussion and action if necessary. Okay, now we'll move on to urgent communication. Anyone with an urgent communication on a topic not on the agenda may address the commission at this time. Leslie.
Yes, so to speak on an item not on the agenda, if you're dialing in, please press star nine. Otherwise, use the raise the hand icon at the bottom of the screen. And I see no one wishing to speak on this item. Or. This topic.
Okay, thank you. All right, now we'll move on to the consent calendar. Which has one minute from the February fifteenth, twenty twenty-two center for mission meeting. Do I hear a. A motion to approve the minutes from, from the last meeting? Any comments first? Apologies for being ahead over there, Leslie. Did you ask for any comments?
Uh, yes, so if you wish to comment on the minutes, please press star nine if you're phoning in or use the raise the hand icon at the bottom of the screen. You are in web and are attendance. And there is no one wishing to speak on the minutes.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second that motion, Commissioner. Vice Commissioner Saudi.
Do we have an initial motion?
I thought you had made a motion. Probably not. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Commissioner Harris, I second that motion.
Very good. All right.
I'll take.
Is there any discussion? If not, since we don't have any discussion, Leslie, could you move to your role?
Yes, I turned ahead. Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Haiden. You're on mute.
Sorry, I was trying to use the spacebar, but it didn't work. I was absent, so I will abstain.
I think that's okay. Commissioner Mercado.
Same, I'll abstain.
And which is absent? Vice Chair Saudi.
Was I absent during that meeting? I read the minutes that were sent over. Probably should have abstained. If I was.
Um, so I would say that just because you were absent doesn't mean you do need to abstain. You may to, to abstain.
Yeah. Just ready to.
We won't.
Yeah, the prep.
We won't have a quorum otherwise. I'm sorry, Vice Chair Saudi.
Yeah, I, I, yes, I agree.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I just, it, there were short meetings from before.
And Chair Privat Tally.
Yes.
Two, three. It's still not a quorum. And you don't have to, but it's either Commissioner Haiden or. Commissioner Mercado was, yeah.
I'm happy to change and approve.
Okay, no pressure, no pressure. And thank you.
They were very brief.
The minute.
It was not, yeah, it was pretty short.
Yeah. Okay, great. Thank you. All right, now we'll move on to tonight's item for the public hearing. This public hearing is about six ten Dubois or Dubois, depending on if you're speaking French or English, or anyway. It's a request for a sign program for installation of thirty-one new signs on a eighty-six thousand twenty-nine square foot site developed with two commercial buildings for motor vehicle sales and services. The APN is thirteen dash zero forty-one dash twenty-nine. The planned development, it's a planned development zone. Christian Oaks is the applicant. Montgomery Tech Center is the owner. And this is plan twenty-one dash oh five three. The project planner is, is below, contract planner is. She's a contract planner. And. Action is to adopt the resolution approving system program. I'm gonna have a staff report.
Yeah, and I would like to officially introduce Isabel Lo, who is one of our newer contract planners, so we're excited that she's here. Pass it on to you, Isabel.
Thank you, Leslie, and thank you, Chair Privat Tally. I'll go ahead and share my screen and you can start the staff report. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah.
Perfect. Can you see my screen okay? Awesome. So let's start. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Isabel Lo. I am the project planner working on behalf of the city of San Rafael for this project applicant, Christian Oaks, on behalf of the property owner, is requesting approval for a sign program at six ten Dubois Street. The project is brought to the attention of the Planning Commission pursuant to the San Rafael Municipal Code, section fourteen nineteen oh four three B one, where the Planning Commission has the authority to approve, conditionally approve, or deny the proposed project. The project site is designated general commercial in the general plan and is zone plan development. The lot size is slightly under two acres and has the fore area of about twenty-six thousand square feet. The site currently provides motor vehicle sales and service. There are two buildings on the property, Building A and Building B, and these two buildings are connected by a service canopy. Please note that this existing service canopy will be replaced by a service closure based on approval of an administrative design review permit for exterior fascia improvements on March eleven, twenty twenty-two. As mentioned earlier, the applicant is requesting for approval of the sign program. The project proposes thirty-one signs at nineteen different locations on the north, south, and east elevations. The new signs would replace all existing signs and would be of luxury carpets. A sign program is permitted specifically for signs proposed in a planned development district, and it's intended to achieve aesthetic compatibility between the signs within the project. It may also allow for some flexibility in the number, size, type, and placement of sites. The next couple of slides will show existing signs on the property. The north elevation shows Building A and Building B. This is the elevation that faces the freeway. The south elevation is the back of Building A, and this faces Dubois Street. The east elevation faces Rice Drive and shows part of Building A, the service canopy, and Building B. And this is the service canopy that will be replaced by the approved service closure. Oh, so the next few slides will present the proposed elevations. I've color coded the structures to differentiate the buildings shown in the elevation. On the north elevation, eleven signs are proposed with five on Building A and six on Building B. Note that the allowed sign areas are calculated pursuant to section fourteen nineteen oh six four A of the municipal code, which states that one square foot of sign area is permitted for it each linear foot of, up to a maximum of two hundred square feet. As you'll see, as I go through the slides, the proposed signs fall within the allowed sign areas. On the south elevation, seven signs are proposed. On the east elevation, thirteen signs are proposed, five on Building A, five on the service closure, and. You're here for reference. All this is staff lines that the proposed project is consistent with the general plan and zoning ordinance. Staff also believes that findings for approvals of the signs, sign program can be made. General plan, relevant policies were extracted from the neighborhood, community, design, and preservation, and economy. Project site is located in the near southeast neighborhood in proximity to commercial. The sign program is in line with the industrial area design of and would provide visual identification for the commercial business. The project site is located around one of San Rafael's major gateway elements along the US one-on-one, and the proposed time program would take advantage of freeway visibility and contribute to the area's commercial and business district. The proposed sign would have concealed or internal lighting to prevent glare. I've also finds that the proposed sign program is consistent with the zoning ordinance. All proposed signs would be standardized based on official car logos and would be of acrylic and cement plaster materials with aluminum composite material panels and bronze frames for the background. The proposed signs are similar to the modern design of the existing building, and the size and number of the proposed signs are in scale with the use given the. All signs proposed would be onsite wall signs centered in each location and placed on the street front fence that would not obstruct any exits, windows, or safety equipment. I've recommended that the Planning Commission adopt the draft resolution. Please note that the project required review by the design review board, and they have recommended approval on February twenty-three, twenty twenty-two. They noted that the proposed signs are in scale with its use and that they line up with what the board is looking for in terms of design and quality. Other options that the commission may pursue is to approve the project with additional conditions, continue the hearing till later date. Location. The applicant is here to provide additional information if needed, and I am here to answer any questions as well. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Isabel. Great job.
Share your screen.
All right. And now I believe we're gonna have a. Brief oral report from the applicant, is that correct?
Yes, does the applicant have a presentation?
I do. Can you hear me? My name's Christian Oaks with TWM Architects. And I provided an exhibit. If Isabel could pull that up. Good evening. We, the. Owner of the businesses here on this property is investing heavily to really refurbish this building and make it a thriving retail spot. It's, it's been a little neglected over the recent years. It was originally built in nineteen eighty-eight as a retail center for home improvement, and it was designed to carry six to eight tenants or stores. And in doing so, I've highlighted here in orange on nineteen eighty-eight plan set, it provided twenty signage panels for these residents, these residential businesses, home improvement businesses. It has evolved due to its location, served as semi-industrial area and freeway frontage into a auto dealership, and in this particular case, it really works well for the owner for luxury or boutique type auto showrooms. We're putting five, a small showrooms in this, three in this building, there's two existing in the smaller building, and they are all individual brands, some from different countries. They all have a very distinct character and style, although they all sort of fall under the same category as sort of luxury automobiles. So the part of the reasoning of the count of thirty-one signs is that these signs are smaller logo type signs. They're not a big sign like you'd have for Best Buy or for a standalone dealership like Mercedes-Benz or Ford, for example. There's five brands in here fighting for some exposure. If you flip down a couple pages. I'll come back to this one. Go, go to the freeway views, yeah. The, one of the problems with this center is it is back away from the freeway. It also has a train track that was built right in front of it with fencing and landscaping. So there are no pylon type signs proposed, but each brand is looking for identity on all three sides to try to get exposure. If you move back up to the, the details, these details you'll see highlighted in orange. They are actually sign panels that were built on the building. If you move up one more, they are sort of unfinished portions of the building, these twenty boxes that really just have sort of a deteriorating plywood panel on them. And we're going to refinish all those panels with an ACM material that gives a, an accent to the building, and it's really gonna help accentuate. This building looks pretty bland right now, monochromatic, but it's gonna be a lot nicer when it has a little accent to it with this contrasting band on the building. Uh, I think it'll really, and I think the designer review board really supported the whole concept here. That's, that's the primary conversation. Thank you for helping us really. We look forward to your support to help, help us fix up this building for San Rafael. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Oaks. All right. Do we have any questions? Does the commission have any questions of, of staff or the applicant?
I have one quick question, supporter of the project. It looks like DRB already gave it their rubber stamp and doesn't seem to be asking for any variations. I was just wondering about the lighting. It looks like they're internally lit, and I'm sure the DRB asked a lot about that already. But I'm wondering if there's additional lighting that's gonna be planned that will be permitted separately, because it usually is something that's can be contentious and also is closely looked at by the community in terms of light leakage and you know, just how the, how the building looks at night from the freeway.
There's no other lighting than what is shown on this application. The lot already has standards that are adequate for night light. There's no increased display type park lighting on.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Any more questions? No, okay. Great, all right. Let's go ahead and open up the public hearing and ask staff to open up for public comments.
Yes. Thank you. If you're wishing to comment on this item, when you are phoning in, please press star nine. I'll use the raise the hand icon at the bottom of the screen. And there is no one wishing to comment on this.
Okay, great. All right. So I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing then. Uh, so. Now I will call on commissioners in turn to ask follow-up questions of the staff. So just around the, around the screen here, Vice Chair Saudi, do you have any questions?
I do not.
Commissioner Hovman?
I do not.
Commissioner Harris?
I do not.
Commissioner Mercado?
No, no questions. I'm happy to make a motion to approve the resolution.
Okay, great. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion. Commissioner Haiden?
All right, Leslie, could you take a roll call?
Yeah, let me just write that down, motion and second. Okay, Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Haiden?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yep.
Commissioner Smoothie, absent, sorry. Vice Chair Saudi, Saudi.
Yes. Yes.
And Chair Privat Tally.
Yes.
Is that a yes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Can you hear me?
No, I can't.
Motion passed. Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
I'll, thank you very much. Mr. Oaks, and thank you, Ms. Love. Thank you very much. All right. Next, we'll move on to the director's report. Leslie, could you give us the director's report?
Yeah, and so at the council meeting last Monday, the twenty-first, our housing division submitted the annual progress report and housing policy update, which the council accepted. So it is being passed on the HCD for acceptance as well. And some of the data highlighted in this report is for twenty twenty-one. We have entitled twelve units. We have issued building permits for sixty-six units. And a hundred and three units were built and granted. And a hundred and three units were built and granted final occupancy, and we did not lose any units. So that is actually kind of exciting for a post-COVID year, because there's a little bit of a lag. And also, there was a little bit of an update to our REDA numbers, and it looks like we have all right, three hundred and eighty-eight units towards our total of one thousand and seven. So I don't think that, I think that's pretty encouraging, because we have a lot of projects coming in, so we're doing our part. That's good to know. And the council also passed two kind of housing resolutions for funding. And a recommendation to the county board of supervisors for community development, GLOT grants, and recommended funding for Eden Housing, Episcopal Community Services, somewhere bound in Marin, Marin Center for Independent Living, the Residential Rehabilitation Loan Program, and the Canal Alliance. And I think that was postponed until they acquire an agreement for property. And there's also, it's a recommendation for permanent local housing allocation, project funding for the calendar year for the next calendar year, twenty twenty-two, and that was also a recommendation to the county board of supervisors. And I think I brought this up last time. I'm not sure if you are all there, but the council is expecting to go live in a hybrid model starting in April, April, wow, that's next month, that's the end of this week. And I, the last of my understanding would be the second meeting, and they will work out the kinks, and we will follow soon afterwards. So I would think if it works out well, we'll see you in the chamber come April, May, come May.
Great.
All right, well, thank you very much, Leslie. Do any planning commissioners have any additional communication?
No, I have a couple of questions for Leslie on some ongoing projects. And can you give us an update on the hotel downtown and how that's going and if it's on schedule? And I also noticed that the new hotel that has started to break ground across from Blue Wave. So if you could give us updates on those two projects, that'd be great.
You know, I, I cannot at this time, but I definitely see the hotel downtown going up. They get a little setback every time it rains, so I know they had a definite setback from last fall with the, what was it, the atmospheric river, and they had a error, but I can definitely provide a more thorough update, because hate to say it, but once it gets in the building permit phase, I kind of lost my place. But I'll, I'll report back to you next meeting, for sure.
Great, thanks.
Excellent, thank you. Does anyone else have any questions or communication?
Don't forget your Form seven hundreds.
Yeah.
If you haven't done those yet. Lindsay will start, start pestering a little bit more. I usually wait till the end. I did mine, so I'm feeling pretty proud, but I thought I'd share that.
I wish you could just do a copy of last year, because it's all, you know, it's very similar.
All right, excellent. All right, well, thanks, everyone. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, already.